All right, webinar has started.
All right. All right, I see people popping in, wonderful. Well, our city council has just returned from a closed session and I will ask our city attorney if he would have report out for us.
Yes, there was no reportable action taken in close session.
Thank you very much. All right, we will now call to order the regular session of the city council of the city of Atascadero. And we'll ask council member Daras to lead us in a pledge to the flag.
Hey, does somebody, I don't know how, oh, there we go, there's our flag, thank you Susan. All right, everybody would stand, put your hand on your heart and follow with me. And begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Daras. Let's see, roll call please.
Council member Borbo.
Here.
Council member Daras.
Here.
Council member Funk.
Here.
Mayor pro Tim Newsom.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Well, if you are watching or listening tonight, we welcome you. If you would like to speak during the time set aside for community forum or during public comment on any one of the items that is on our agenda, you can do so, obviously, if you're listening and watching on the webinar by raising your hand, pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of the webinar. And if you are watching on TV or listening on the radio, you can call Again, that's 805-538-2888 to provide public comment via phone. When you call, let us know which item it is that you'd like to speak on. If there is an item you'd like to speak on it, when we start talking about it, you may want to start calling in because sometimes between charter and listening on the radio, there's a little bit of a lag, so we wouldn't want you to miss that. Once again, the number 805-538-2888. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
I've got it, I'll take a motion by Mayor pro Tim Newsom, a second by council member Borbo. And we will waive the reading in full of all ordinances appearing on this agenda and the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the council votes. Roll call please.
Council member Borbo.
Yes.
Council member Funk.
Yes.
Council member Daras.
Yes.
Mayor pro Ken Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We are on to presentations this evening and we have one and that is a proclamation recognizing April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and this will be received by RISE representative Christina Caviana Caviani. Let's see, I see her in the attendees. Would you be able to bring her over, Luke? Is she there? She is. Hello, Ms. Caviana.
Hello.
Thank you for being here. I will go ahead and I'll read the proclamation and then we would love to hear from you.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome. So whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in Atascadero. And whereas rape, sexual assault and sexual harassment harm our community and statistics show that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before age 18. And youth ages 12 to 17 are two and a half times as likely to be victims of sexual violence. And whereas our local student population is also at high risk, nationally, one in four women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. And whereas last year RISE, we received 1,691 crisis calls from members of our community and provided 4,832 days of emergency shelter. And whereas the number of RISE clients seeking counseling for sexual assault related issues continues to increase every year with a total of 2,334 hours of counseling provided at low or no cost to community members across the county last year. And whereas last year RISE reached 2,699 people by prevention, education, programming and trained 28 volunteers to serve as advocates on the RISE crisis line. And whereas the city of Atascadero joins RISE and other advocates in communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence and acknowledges that each day is an opportunity to create change for the future. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Atascadero does hereby proclaim April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And you can see our city clerk is holding up the resolution there, so, or the proclamation, so thank you Laura. And Ms. Caviana, we would love to hear from you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate the time. Thank you to all the city council for this proclamation. My name's Christina and I'm the Education and Communications Director at RISE. RISE is a nonprofit that serves sexual assault and intimate partner violence survivors and their loved ones. We provide intimate partner violence service in the North County and we are the only agency in our county serving survivors of sexual assault and abuse for the, for all of San Luis County. We have stayed committed to continuing to provide essential services and crisis intervention to our survivors in the midst of COVID-19. In order to make therapy services available to survivors and their families, RISE put in place infrastructure to allow us to offer telehealth, virtual therapy for both individuals and groups. And this will expand our capacity for serving clients beyond the pandemic. Our two emergency shelters remain open to survivors fleeing violence and we adjusted protocols to ensure a safe and healthy environment for our guests and staff. Our advocates continue to be available 24/7 on our crisis and support line and our educators continue to provide prevention services across the county. RISE increased the amount of financial support we provide to clients from 5,000 in 2019 to over 20,000 in 2024, times more year over year. We were able to meet this incredible need due in large part to the CARES Act. And although we're hopeful for the continued easing of restrictions, the impact of the pandemic continues to place an extraordinary burden on our clients today. And a return to, you know, normal doesn't solve for those whose normal never included safety. Now more than ever, our survivors need the support of their local community. RISE invites all of Slow County to believe survivors this Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. You can visit riseslow.org and take the hashtag I Believe pledge and make a commitment to supporting survivors in your life. While there, you can also read about why this pledge is so critical and you can also make a donation to support ongoing services and participate in our 10 Days of Winning that begins April 19th, where we'll be awarding awesome prizes like hotel stays and wine experiences on Facebook. We also invite you to participate in a free one hour lunch and learn workshop where we'll be talking about sexual assault and how it's represented in popular culture and media and we'll be debunking this and misconceptions and give you tools on how to make a difference in your community. This workshop will be hosted on Zoom on April 22nd at 12:00 PM. And of course, all the information is on our website, riseslow.org. And finally, if you or anyone you know is experiencing sexual or intimate partner violence and needs help, please call 855-886-7473 to speak to one of our confidential advocates. We're so grateful for the support of our community now more than ever. Thank you.
Christina, thank you for being here and we are so grateful for the work that RISE does. It just continues year after year and, and you're helping more and more people. And I know many of us on council and throughout the city have been involved in different events and fundraisers that you've held and we're very grateful for the work that you do and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
All right, so we will now move on to our consent calendar. Our consent calendar consists of items that are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff and will be approved of one motion if there's no member of the council or the public that is wishing to, to pull an item. I know that our city clerk does have a modification to note on item A2. So if I could bring you on for that, Ms. Christensen, and then I will ask council if we have any questions.
Sure, on A2, we just provided counsel and have uploaded on our website the exhibit A that goes along with the resolution that lists all of the properties, the parcels, subject to the weed abatement.
Thank you. Are there any members of the council wishing to pull an item for discussion? Seeing none, I will go to the webinar here. If you are on this line and you would like to pull an item that is on the consent calendar, if you would raise your hand and let us know. And I will ask Luke, is there anybody on the line who would like to discuss a consent item?
We have no callers at the moment for this item.
Thank you. And then I will ask our city clerk, is there anyone who emailed in with regards to public comment?
There is not.
All right, so we'll bring that back to council for a motion.
I'll move approval of consent calendar with the additional exhibit as noted by the city clerk.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Borbo, a second by council member Funk, roll call please.
Council member Borbo.
Yes.
Council member Funk.
Yes.
Council member Daras.
Yes.
Mayor pro Tim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we are now on to updates from our city manager, Ms. Ricker.
Thank you, mayor and council members. Can I first confirm that you can see my screen and on my?
Can.
Yes. There we go. Okay, the first one item I want to talk about tonight is the Measure D 20 upcoming finance committee meetings. The finance committee meetings are actually meetings in regard to the entire budget, including Measure D 20. City staff is currently preparing budget drafts, refining revenue projections, identifying deficiency, researching areas of prioritizations, developing cost projections and generally gathering information. The budget is made up of many, many funds, each with their own restrictions and requirements for the use of expenditure of those revenues and expenses and fund balance. So these finance committee meetings are designed to go through every detail, more than you ever wanted to know about our several hundred page budget document and do that. We are going to present a draft action plan to the city council on April 27th and then beginning April 29th through the end of May. And I believe we have one on the 22nd, but I will double check on that. We will be having a finance committee each Thursday at 3:00 PM. These meetings are open to the public and the agenda and access information to the meetings will be posted to the city website and will be advertised ahead of time. We typically start towards the back of the budget, some of those pages that nobody ever gets to. The debt service funds, some of the other funds will hit those first and move, move forward in hitting the general fund and the Measure D 20 funds that are part of the general fund towards the middle to end of May. It is, I just did get a text, it is April 22nd that will be the, the first day of the finance committee meetings. We had such a successful creek cleanup day and so many wonderful volunteers that showed up that Urshine wanted to do it again, which is fantastic. In the past, they've only been able to do one a year. This year, they said, hey, we've had so many volunteers, how can we say no? So they will be doing another creek cleanup day on April 24th from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. Similar to last time, volunteers will meet in the sunken gardens. And this time, the cleanup event is being sponsored by Atascadero Bible Church and the city of Atascadero. When I talked to Mike Campa of Urshine, he had said that Atascadero Bible Church had really wanted to do this and reached out to him for help and we're putting on this joint, joint cleanup day, which will be wonderful. So please come on out, tell your friends. It's wonderful, two hours, you get a lot done and then hopefully we'll have the beautiful weather we've been having, so April 24th. I want to talk about traffic way construction, which starts tomorrow. So the city recently had a groundbreaking ceremony to celebrate the kickoff for this project. Traffic rate will receive safety improvements to the sidewalk, curbs, ramps and a portion of the roadway on both sides of the street between the highway over crossing and El Camino Real. The improvements are funded through the federal community development block grant program, which focuses on the removal of barriers to pedestrian use and increases accessibility under the American With Disabilities Act. In addition, the new sidewalks will match our downtown area aesthetics, including decorative pavers along the curbs. And during this construction, there may be some intermittent traffic delays. Drivers should be sure they pay close attention to the signage and to plan for a little extra time if you're traveling through the area. Like a lot of our traffic delays, certainly if you can find an alternate route or something, I think that saves everybody a little bit on frustration. It will be open, but we are going to be doing work in that area. It is expected that the project will be completed in mid-June. Also because that is a very narrow area, if you have a large truck or a trailer or an RV, it might be wise to use another alternate route to get on the freeway or pass through the area. Next is Brew at the Zoo. So there is just one week left to purchase tickets. They are going fast. And we are once again going to be doing a virtual Brew at the Zoo. It'll be held Saturday, April 24th from 12:30 to 3:30 PM. The birth, this virtual beer festival will deliver amazing craft beers, seltzers, meads and hard cider right to the comfort of your own home. 100% of the proceeds from this event go directly to the Charles Paddock Zoo, so you can drink some craft beers and ciders and benefit the animals at the same time. Tickets are $65 for a 14-pack mailed directly to your front door. And then you will join the party virtually to enjoy each of the breweries, talking about their brews, great music and meeting the zoo animals. So you can get your tickets at visitatascadero.com. And then Atascadero Rock Snake. So Atascadero Rock Snake does have the potential for the Guinness Book of World Records. The primary snake has 5,253 rocks. We also have some other smaller rocks. The main rock snake currently measures about 1,300 linear feet. So we have a chance to take the world rock snake record. To get to the record and beat it, we're encouraging residents to take their own creatively painted rocks to add to the snake at the lake. And we're encouraging everyone to be sure to get out and enjoy our wonderful spring weather with a rock around the lake and to go and see the snakes. It, it is a lot of fun to look at the creativity of people and the fun rocks and how each one is different. Especially for those, those right brained, number crunching people like us that just look at those things in awe and go, wow, wouldn't that be cool if I could do that? So we give a very special thank you to Wanda Cole, who introduced the rock snake to Atascadero and to Atascadero News for finding Wanda and presenting the idea of the Guinness Book of World Records. So it's a lot of fun, go out and take a look at it. I know that there's been gender reveals out there with turning over the rocks. There have been marriage proposals, prom asks, all sorts of fun things. Please join in the fun, even if you're not creative. I did a rock, you know, if I can do one, anyone can. So please help us grow our rock snake. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
So Rochelle, was your rock like an adding machine or like an HP12C or something like that?
No, because I'm not creative enough to make it look like that. My rock is blue. How's that?
Perfect. That's awesome. Any questions of our city manager?
Yes, for the really lazy, you should not just put a plain rock out there, right?
No, no, but I, okay, I'm going to rat my mother out and she's going to kill me. I made my mother do a rock with me and she looked at the rock and she's as artistic as I am and she goes, it looks like a mouse. I'm just going to put it out there and I'm like, no. So she put one eye, a little pink dot for the ear and then a little tail and that was it.
Abigail's daycare did it too. So the two and three year olds did it, she came home covered in black paint. So I know her rock's at least black.
It's a lot of fun.
Oh, that's awesome. Council member Funk, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask on the finance committee. I know, I know that's going to be on the website, but there are folks, there are certain things that people have particular interest in. So do we know when capital improvements might be discussed, for instance?
We are hoping for April 29th, but honestly, it depends on when we get a lot of information. Maybe Jerry can tell us a little bit more.
Yes, we are working toward getting those on the 29th, but there are a lot of different numbers, as you can imagine, to pull together and we want to make sure we get it right. So we may need to take a look at that, the first meeting in May.
Well, that, I mean, to council member Funk's point, will that be on the website? Like, will we say like what we're doing on what date? So, you know, maybe in another week or so, people will be able to see, okay, on the 22nd, we're doing this and the 29th, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay. Because yeah, to your point, you're probably capital improvements and general fund are the two that people are most interested in and, you know. But it actually, the whole thing is actually quite interesting. I mean, I say this as a numbers person, but hopefully. So maybe you might roll your eyes, but really, if you want to get an understanding of how the city budget works, it is hugely eye opening and I think you would, you would really enjoy it from that perspective. So to the extent that any members of the public are interested in that and able to attend, highly recommended. Yes, council member Funk.
And then did we have a date that we thought the budgets would be discussed for the communities that have city administered funds that they pay into for a line? That would include Apple Valley and Los Lomas and some other neighborhoods within the city. Do you know when that's hitting then, timing?
I believe that's our next council meeting. Is that right Rochelle?
The council or our next finance committee?
So we do both. There are actually two council meetings where the council approves, does a notice of intent for the public meeting and then a public meeting where the budget is gone over and the engineers report approved and, and all of that. At both of those, all of the budget and all of the detail is in there. But we also will discuss it as part of the finance committee and I'm not sure if we have that nailed down yet.
So if someone, if people are wanting to be active on, on those issues, they should plan on coming to one of the council meetings, probably?
They could, they could come to both or either or neither. So yeah, if they want to let us know, they could, they could either come to a council meeting, which like I said, at the next meeting, we will be having at least the first notices on that and that would be a good time to come. Or the finance committee, which should probably be the 22nd or the 29th. Are you working more towards those? And you can give input there.
Okay, and then for the less initiated or those who are intimidated by the, the, the budget is about this thick. It's currently propping up my laptop.
Yes.
The last year's is. They, the less initiated would, I would think, would, would it be fair to say that they might find it really fruitful to be here at the council meeting on the 27th when we're talking about the prioritization and the action planning that's going to guide decisions that feed into that budget?
Yes.
Fair statement?
That is a fair statement. Hopefully, they've been participating in all of the discussions all the way along and aren't waiting till the last moment to try and give input, but we certainly take input all the way. We had all of those Measure D 20 sessions where we talked about priorities for everything in addition to all of the council meetings and other stuff. We did have the financial strategy, I'm sorry, the goal setting session and all of that. And department heads, based on that goal setting session and those priorities, have come up with some numbers that, and, and some actions that the council will be reviewing and prioritizing at the April 27th meeting. So certainly, the public, we're looking for a public input at that section too.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on to community forum. This is the portion of our meeting reserved for people who want to address the council on any matter that is not on our agenda this evening and over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers will be limited to three minutes and we ask that you would state your name for their record before making your comments. Comments that are made at community forum will not become a subject of discussion this evening. We allow a maximum of 30 minutes total for community forum. And any members of the public who have needs outside of this meeting, you can certainly reach our city clerk, cityclerk@atascadero.org or call 805-470-3400. We will have the timer turned on to make sure you can see the time that you have. And so we will look now to the, the hands being raised. And I did see a chat, Chris Rodebush, I think, wanted to speak a community forum. Would ask that you raise your hand if you're able to do that on the webinar, but we'll make sure we get you on. And I think I possibly see the phone, there's a hand raised there. So Luke, I will let you, let me know who needs to speak.
We'll start off with Chris here in the webinar.
Okay.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Hello, my name is Chris Rodebush from the We Are the Care Initiative. I heard that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It is also Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. April marks a time to recognize that our community's children are precious and the quality of their early years is our collective responsibility. We have a role to play in ensuring each and every child has access to high quality early environments at home, at childcare, at school and in the community that will promote their optimal growth and development. You might be wondering how you can honor and support children and families in our community during the month of April. Luckily, we have three options for you. Number one, explore the hashtag Kids Are Essential initiative. The national campaign stands for high quality childcare, paid leave, economic security, maternal and child health and mental health and was born out of many crises that are impacting children and families. COVID, racial injustice and economic instability inspired this initiative, which upholds a goal to promote children in our society. Visit kidsareessential.org to learn more. Number two, access the policies, assess the policies of the city of Atascadero in regards to family friendly practices. Your city is a major employer and can be an example to others in your community. By requesting HR or administrative staff to evaluate the family friendly workplace policies in your, in place, you can better identify deficits and expand practices to support your employees. As a reminder, We Are the Care Initiative offers a family friendly workplace toolkit containing a diverse section of ideas and examples that can be implemented in order to better support families. Remember, family friendly practices are better for business, better for economy and better for your city. Visit slowfamilyfriendlywork.org to access the toolkit. Finally, to honor Month of the Child, we value the children and families we consider becoming involved in We Are the Care. Parents, business leaders, childcare professionals, elected officials and all other members of the public are encouraged and welcome to join. We are thankful for our childcare liaison, councilwoman Newsom on this council, but we should remind you that all are welcome. We have four task forces that meet monthly and we need the minds and talents that we know are out there in our community to help build this important movement. Visit firstfyslow.org to learn more about the We Are the Care initiative. Thank you so much for your time and your commitment to children and their families in the city. We will be back again soon with more information and updates.
Thank you, Ms. Rodebush. So Luke, I see a hand raised. Is that for the caller or I don't see anyone on the webinar?
Chris was in the webinar.
Okay, so, okay, so now the hand is gone. That, okay, that was interesting. I will ask Laura if we have any, any, hello, public comment that we've? that we've received through email to be read into the record this evening. You are muted.
Sorry about that. We do have one, and I'll read it right now. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Moreno and councilmembers. My name is Ron Crawl. I'm the CEO of North County Recycling and Compost, a locally owned and operated facilities, facilities located in Paso Robles and Creston, California. Throughout the North County, we provide comprehensive solid waste and recycling services for residential and commercial customers. The services we offer include processing solid waste, recycling, and composting of solid, C and D, co-mingled recycling, green and food waste streams designed to comply with the new SB 1383. Our North County recycling facility has recently invested in solar energy to expand our environmental stewardship and reduce our carbon footprint. We have also invested in a facility expansion to help better serve the recycling requirements in our community, which we hope to have completed by year's end. These investments allow us to expand our ability to assist the North County locally in complying with the new requirements of SB 1383 without adding to larger carbon footprint issues with additional transportation to faraway solutions impacting our natural resources, air quality, and traffic congestion. Our facility recycles 100% of all incoming organic and green waste and 85-plus percent of construction and demolition material we process. With that, we can help achieve the required diversion and mandatory procurement goals that are now required in SB 1383, impacting all commercial and residential generators. Additionally, we complete the recycling loop with selling our compost, mulch, and wood retail products we produce back to the communities we serve, creating the much needed circular economy in Slow County that SB 1383 strives to create. Our fully permitted facility located in Paso Robles for 20-plus years with locally designed and developed assets to provide all services required to satisfy SB 1383 requirements for years to come. Thank you for your time this evening. I look forward to hearing from you with any questions or thoughts as we continue to grow green. Be safe and be well. And that's all we've received.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. I do see a hand raised on the phone.
Yes, we have Wendy Lewis calling.
Good evening, Ms. Lewis.
Good evening to you, Mayor Moreno, and the rest of the wonderful council. This is Wendy Lewis from El Camino Home Organization, or ECO. It has been quite some time since I've had a chance to update you folks and the community. We've been dealing with the pandemic and quite a bit going on at ECO, so I finally found some time and would love to share. About a year and a half ago, we embarked on becoming a 24-hour facility in Atascadero. And at that time, we had great support from council and the city to do that. And as we made that transition, we also had some opportunities to expand our services. At that time, we were one facility operating just an overnight shelter and about six staff. And within the past year and few months, we have significantly grown our organization to three facilities, including a new facility in Paso Robles and an emergency winter shelter in Atascadero, and expanding our abilities at ECO Atascadero. So we now have 20 staff, still amazing community support and volunteers. But just wanted to highlight a few things within that incredible expansion. The Atascadero Winter Shelter that took place for the first time with our organization this past winter was very successful. We took that over as the past organization had asked us to take it on as they were sunsetting out. In the five months we operated, we averaged about 15 people per night, hit our maximum of 20 night, many nights. The, we were able to move 18 folks into the ECO program. And the super exciting news, out of those 18, six, six people were able to be housed. Keeping in mind, these are the most chronic in our community. We also connected those folks to resources like AA meetings, detox, TIMA. So we're just super excited about the success there. We have also added an outreach program in North County, which means case managers go outside of our walls and meet people where they're at throughout our community to connect to resources, to get them, looking at forwards, progress in steps. We have converted our aging kitchen to a workforce development center, and I can't wait for the community to see that. And we're embarking on a complete rehab utilizing the HEAP funding that was awarded about a year and a half ago at ECO Atascadero. So in just a few short months, we will have a complete new facility in the downstairs portion of our organization's facilities and be able to be offering successful resources for many years to come. During pandemic and all of this expansion, we continued to do what we strive to do and get people back into housing. And in 2020, during a pandemic, we were able to get over 50 people housed. Thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for your support of our work.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. We appreciate you being here. And I will look and see if there are any other hands. I'm not seeing any in the webinar. This will be last call. If anybody wishes to speak here at Community Forum, please raise your hand. And I will ask Luke, I don't see anyone on the phone. Do you see anybody? I see Mr., oh, Mr. Oslin had raised his hand and then put it down. Again, maybe that was an error. Jeff, I'll give you one last call if you'd like to speak at Community Forum here. All right, I'm not seeing anything. All right, so we will go ahead and close Community Forum and bring that back to council. Appreciate the reports from, of course, Ms. Rodebush on We Are the Care, and very much so from Wendy Lewis about ECO and the good news about the winter shelter this year and all the, all the good work that you're doing. And that kitchen is amazing. All right, so we're moving on now. We have no public hearings this evening, but we have quite a few management reports, so let's get moving. Our first one is C1, this is the Del Rio El Camino Real Plan Line in the vicinity of the US 101 interchange. You and the public may remember that we talked about and reviewed the whole east side not too long ago and approved and to move forward with that. And now we're just dealing with a small west side portion. And so I will bring on our Public Works Director, Nick DeMar, to present for this item.
Thank you, Mayor Moreno. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So back in September 22nd last year, we brought, the city council looked at the overall new alternative design improvements that were proposed for the Del Rio El Camino corridor around 101. And this is the overall plan as shown. At that time, the city council adopted a resolution to approve the improvements on the east side of 101. So that'd be kind of on the upper side here with 101 is that big, bigger line going diagonally through the screen here. But all that work or all the improvements on the El Camino and Del Rio east of US 101 was approved at that point. A lot of these improvements were based upon an exhaustive traffic study that I'll spare everybody with tonight. We went through that in good detail last, at the last, at the September 22nd meeting in relation to some of the Del Rio specific plan updates as well. So at that time, we didn't look at the, the west side, and tonight, this is the west side only that we're looking at. And we wanted to provide a little bit more, kind of look at it a little bit more with the northwest quadrant development that's being proposed or talked about, and then also reach out to the neighborhood with some of their concerns and just some of the information here. So tonight's resolution is related to this exhibit right here only. This is Del Rio Road running from right to left. And then you can see there on the right-hand side, that's US 101 Southbound Lane and the ramps. To the bottom, lower left is Apple Valley Neighborhood. And Ramona Road is kind of in the bottom there. So this plan line, the majority, I guess, change is really real, realigning Ramona Road. Ramona Road right now comes very close to that southbound US 1 ramp intersection and is very tight. And then, so we need to relocate that to the west for queuing distance. On the north there, or in the upper, upper portion of this, these improvements includes that northwest quadrant. Currently owned, majority of it is owned by a church right now, and there's some development that has been talked about. And then on that very corner near the off-ramp on the southbound, off-ramp is another parcel owned by Peter Laughlin. He's proposing a tiny home village, so that's kind of screened in there as well. Just a couple items on it. The Ramona Road does need to be realigned, basically because of the queue lengths. So this queue length and traffic speed, it's how much storage, how many vehicles you can queue up to an approach. So if there's a red light at the southbound ramp and you're driving from Monterey, hit that red light. How many cars can stack in there? Right now, there's only room for 35, there's 35 feet. And if you figure average car with spacing is somewhere between 20 and 25 feet, there's only a room for really one car before it starts blocking that intersection of Ramona with Del Rio. And then vice versa, cars that are traveling westbound, if they have to wait at Ramona for some reason, there's not any same amount of queue space, not even enough for two cars before they start blocking that southbound ramp. The traffic analysis, the 2021 that was done with all the future land uses, the most intensive requires 115 feet for the, I'm sorry, I got that backwards, the eastbound. So this would be going towards, on Del Rio, going towards the freeway from Monterey. So there's a requirement for 115 feet that way, and then 79 feet on the, on the other way. So that's a major reason why realignment is suggested there. And it's, it's the thing that also was assumed in all the traffic modeling, because none of the traffic alternative improvements, it doesn't really work right now, to be honest. So all of these things, we're just assuming that Ramona would be realigned. One of the other ideas was, you know, why can't we just make Ramona dead-end road or a cul-de-sac? A couple things. One, if you did say make that a cul-de-sac, and the city currently owns that parcel, there's about 2.2 acres that the city owns on that corner. What would happen is a couple churches are to the south here, there'd be a lot of cut-through traffic on San Ramon Road through the Apple Valley Neighborhood or other neighborhoods as well. It also will support, you know, future more intense development south of this portion. If Frontage Road has really good visibility from the freeway, so it makes it really an optimal place if the city were to pursue for allowing any commercial or retail or something, some other use along this frontage road. And there are some undeveloped, underutilized parcels down there as well. Emergency services and evacuation. So I know the fire chief and police chief will probably concur that having Ramona as a through street is very advantage, advantageous to get to any response calls or anything else. And then the last one is actually, if, you know, on occasion, there might be a crash or helicopter, you know, medical with a crash, and if that were to be closed and backed up, it could be used as a detour for Southbound US 101. Not ideal, nobody would want that to happen. But, you know, in, in, in an event like that, it does provide some flexibility. So there's a lot of advantages for keeping Ramona Road as a through street. We did, the other thing is a little discussion about is the future development on the northwest quadrant. I'm gonna show this again, and you can see on the westbound, there's kind of a deceleration lane and acceleration lane. And kind of right in the middle, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor or not. But right here, there's a property line for the two parcels. So these two driveways, this is into the tiny hotel development, and this would be for the mixed use that project that might be proposed or coming in. These would both be right in and right out only, because there's a, there'd be a median here, and there's just too much traffic that would cause conflicts with side impacts and everything else. So how do you, how do vehicles leaving this get back to the freeway and not cut through, say, San Ramon neighborhoods to the north or south or through Monterey? Really, the hinge point, in my opinion, is right here at the intersection of San Ramon and Del Rio. So this would be an ideal location for something like a mini roundabout where cars leaving, taking a right out and just go through that and get right back on the freeway. So this will be one of those, you know, puzzles to, to figure out when the Barrel Creek development comes in with a plan application. And lastly, we actually had a neighborhood meeting, information meeting. We sent out mailers to nearby properties, including all of Apple Valley. It, we conducted that on March 24th, a couple weeks ago. And kind of explained this, we showed this drawing here, the proposed improvements. We talked about the potential mini roundabout or something else there at the entrance to Apple Valley. And, you know, everybody seemed to be okay with it. Nobody, nobody was bothered with Ramona being realigned closer to their neighborhood. A lot of the questions really revolved around potential development on the, on that church site and then also on the former Walmart site. I just wanted to show this exhibit too. So this was actually, there were two design options for roundabouts that were created back with a Walmart and Annex developments. You can see on the very top here, this is Apple Valley Neighborhood. This was one of the alternatives was to always realign Ramona closer to Apple Valley to get that queuing length. So this has been in place for 10 years or so, and it's always been an option to this one. So this is where Ramona would come in as another leg to that roundabout at the southbound ramp. So just wanted to kind of remind everybody that we have been talking about realigning Ramona for quite some time. So with that, the recommendation tonight is to, this is kind of the second part of that first part that was approved in September 22nd, is to adopt the draft resolution approving the Del Rio Road El Camino Plan Line in the vicinity of US 101 interchange. And this is the west side only. There might have been a little confusion because we did attach overall plan line on the other, on the east side. And I was kind of just, you know, as a placeholder, you know, for one, just to show how everything worked as a system. So with that, Mayor, I can turn it back to you for any questions.
Thank you, Director. I want to ask, it's my understanding that this, we would be looking at this plan line, whether or not any, the Barrel Creek or the tiny homes were to go through. So if those remain vacant, we're still looking at this realignment?
Absolutely. The only, the only way that the traffic analysis works is if, if Ramona gets realigned. And then it all works as a system. You know, it makes sense to do all of these improvements on both sides of the freeway at the same time. There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of advantages to that, both from a cost efficiency and from a traveling public inconvenience and neighborhood inconvenience point as well.
Yeah. Okay. I want to make sure we, as a council, stay focused, because I know we, we could start talking about Barrel Creek and all the other things, because we get excited about that. But what we really need to do is just focus here on this, this plan line change without regards to Barrel Creek and the other things, because those things will come back to us at some point in time.
Correct.
As they go forward. So with that, I will open it up to council questions for Director DeMar. Councilmember Borbo.
Yes, I think this is an easy one. Normally, we adopt the plan line like this so the property owners who are affected know, you know, where the road's gonna go or the improvements are gonna go, so they can do, you know, make their plans accordingly. In this case, the property owner really in question is the city, it looks like. And so that's, I guess, so the, the, the plan line, if you will, on our And so that's, I guess, so the 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 plan line, if you will, on our two properties there, which Where the road will now go between. That would be less important, right? I mean, because we as the city could, if it needed to move a few feet, it wouldn't be a big deal, right?
That's correct. So, you know, ideally, we want to optimize the reuse of these two properties. The right away that's currently existing closer to the freeway there Would be abandoned, would just become a usable, developable piece of that. I guess that property on the east side or northeast side. And that that is going to be the larger portion than the southwest Portion, just because of how that realigns. You can see there on the very bottom, there is a property line with the church. I mean, it's possible this could swing down a little bit more If we were able to get some additional right away from the church, but We really don't need it to make this work currently. But, you know, there's some options in the future, but not knowing what this might be repurposed for. I think is it's got a lot of flexibility for the future.
And these plan line, this plan line, does it include anything on the portion of the property belonging to The already commercially zoned portion and the We'll call it the Barrel Creek side of, you know, a possible project there. There is some effect on their properties as far as adopting this plan line?
Yes, there is. So the yellow Yellow highlighted areas are right away to be acquired or needed. So this is additional right away, that cyan or bluish turquoise looking color. That's actually also Right away or or an easement needed, slope easement. And that kind of indicates what Caltrans is probably going to be asking To have as their right away and a slope easement. They usually require, I believe it's like a hundred Hundred feet from the intersection, you know, they'd like to have control over the approach. They probably won't need all this outside the road if like a retaining wall was to be built on each side or something like that, but Yeah, both the turquoise areas and the highlighted areas are Right away that's needed. So it kind of gives us a definite You know, here's what we need to obtain from these developments and, you know, this allows them from building anything permanent in those areas.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daris.
Thank you. Yeah, Nick, just a question on the the future mini roundabout that you mentioned. This alignment that we've got here obviously is going to need that. I don't see any way around it and just wondering why it's not included In this In this presentation here as as something to to make a decision on now. Do we have to acquire some additional property from from current owners in order to make that happen?
Right, so that that's a great question. The land use The land uses that were assumed in the traffic analysis, it did assume some of those proposed uses On the church property of much more intense commercial. You know, residential and some other things more so than its zone right now. Not not knowing that would be a plan or general plan amendment. You know, we we didn't want to go into that level of detail, that's going to be something that'll have to be figured out with Any proposed commercial development on that church property. So rather than to try to guess what might happen, because right now This is what we need ultimately for the things that can happen out there. You know, that current zoning, this is all we need to do right now. So That'll be something will put the burden on, you know, whatever developer comes and wants to Make the church property more intensive use.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Nick.
Sure.
Do we have any other council questions? Seeing then I will open it up to public comment and I see a hand raised by Mr. Jeff Osland.
Good evening, Council and Mr. DeBar. Question on that mini Roundabout. Because if those developments take place, I think there's things that are concerning to me as a resident on this side of the area. And that is Whether folks can make right turns, left turns And what that will do for traffic with that mini roundabout. And also I know you you had meetings and met with folks from Apple Valley. But I'm not sure the outreach was far enough because I know My neighborhood was not reached and that would be Garcia, Monterey, Some up the hills in Del Rio, and we're the ones that are very much impacted. Especially if there's a fire. And the next thing I would ask for Is our fire chief's input on if a roundabout would slow things up, speed things up, if we need to get out of our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. Are there any other callers or any other attendees on the webinar that would like to speak or I'm not seeing anyone on the line either? I will ask our city clerk if we have anybody who has sent in public comment via email.
We do not.
Okay, thank you. I see no other public comment. I will close public comment and bring it back to council and the staff. So just to be clear, we are not approving the roundabout tonight. It's a concept That we think, you know, should Barrel Creek, the church property Develop the way that they're looking at developing it and we're needing people to be able to turn right, come back around and get on the freeway. We're seeing that as probably a need. Nick, maybe you could speak to, you know, just briefly in the future that we would properly notice Have the fire chief input, that type of thing, if you could assure us that that would be the case.
That that would be the case, Mayor Moreno. And I bring up the roundabout, actually, it probably didn't even need to be discussed tonight because it's not needed as part of this plan line. That will be something that will be directly Required or or something to be figured out by any intense use of that development. And there'll be lots and lots of public hearings on that project. They're going to have to do their own traffic analysis to determine how to, you know, Mitigate traffic from going through those neighborhoods, how the fire trucks and emergency vehicles will get through there. And the fire chief and police chief will also have a crack at looking at this and and responding As well as a community development director, who I'm sure loves to look at this stuff. So All staff will be able to look at that and the public will really be You know, there'll be many meetings, I'm sure, if that proposed Barrel Creek project goes ahead.
Thank you, Director. And with that, any other questions, discussions or a motion?
A move that we adopt the draft resolution approving the Del Rio El Camino Real Plan Line on the west side of one oh one.
I I see a motion by Councilmember Borbo and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Newsom. Mr. Dunsmore, were you coming on just in advance or did you need to stop us for some reason? All right, we'll call please.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Daris?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you and thank you, Director. All right, now we're on to C two, our General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report for twenty twenty, and this is our Community Development Director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore. And Phil, I've got to ask you, it feels like we have gone over this like twelve times in the last six months. So what do you have for us this evening?
I don't have anything new for you this evening, so I'm going to make this really brief. But yes, we have gone over this a lot because we did our housing element recently, so we've been very close to these numbers and Every year, though, we do have to report these numbers to the state, to the housing and community development. And it still gives me a chance to check the pulse and let you know what's happening in the broader picture. So let me get a presentation up here real quick. I'm going to make this brief and just give you some quick numbers on this. Let's see if I can Get the presentation started here momentarily. Let's see, and then I will turn my screen, let's choose that one. All right. How does that look?
There. There it is, yep.
All right, good, it works. All right. So as I mentioned, this is something that is mandated by housing and community development. They like to look at our numbers, they like to look at our policy implementation. It's really focused on just the housing numbers and making sure that we're making progress on our arena, our regional Housing allocation that we're required to have. But it also, they want to look at policy implementation, so we have to give them a report on that. We like to to Bring the planning commission up to speed on this as well as the city council. So real quick, I'm just going to go through some general statistics about the last two years. Twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, very similar activity, even though we had COVID. We saw about fifteen hundred billing permits in twenty nineteen, About seventy-seven planning applications and about seven hundred and eighty-nine final inspections where we completed out those permits. We had a big significant increase in twenty nineteen because the building code changed, so a lot of people wanted to get stuff in before those codes changed. In twenty twenty, though, we kept seeing those numbers happen, even After the communities were put in shut down after March, we still continued to see stuff continue to move. About thirteen hundred and seventy-nine building permits, about seventy-eight planning applications And still about seven hundred and eighty-one final inspections to see those permits through. So that's kind of the general snapshot of what's happening, but the real meat of the discussion tonight is about the housing numbers. We're just beginning our eight-year cycle for our arena. We do have to try and get to the number eight forty-three at the end of that eight years, that's in twenty twenty-eight. Luckily, we got to begin counting those numbers in twenty twenty as part of this, what they call the sixth cycle. So last year, twenty twenty, we did, this is the number of units that are actually completed, they're occupied and done. About thirty-six, what we call above moderate units, which are just housing units that aren't deed restricted. Four that fit the moderate affordable category and five that fit the low income category. That was completed. It doesn't mean that's all we have going on in terms of housing units because there's a lot in the works. And so if I just run down on some of the larger projects. If, for example, people self-help has a project that they're planning right now. Forty units, all of them in a low income category, it'll definitely make a dent in those numbers. Ten eight fifty, which was formerly called the Hartford Project, seventy-five units. A big chunk of affordable units in that number as well. We have another downtown mixed-use project that's coming to Traffic Way, it's going to have eleven units. Emerald Ridge, a small portion of that's already been built. There's several other phases that are going to go through permitting, that's going to reach two hundred and eight Principle that is coming in for permits now at fifty-two. And then Del Rio Ranch and Barrel Creek, further down the line, kind of conceptual at this point, but those will have big chunks of units as well. So Really, when we look at the timeline for the next two to three years, it could be as much as five hundred and thirty-six more units. Getting us a long way to that eight forty-three arena that we need to be able to get to in eight years. So I think that we're making Good long-term progress and we have the zoning and the land to be able to accommodate at least the arena in this particular cycle. But in the future, we will have constraints that hold us back. We will have traffic impacts When we look at our 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 overpasses that are constrained, I think our Public Works Director, at least, we gave you a great idea of what's happening at Del Rio In terms of adjusting the plan lines and making room for stuff to come along, but in the future, we're going to have issues also at San Anselmo and some of the other overpasses that really constrain our density. And we'll have to evaluate that when we do our general plan update. Additionally, there's the wastewater capacity. And then just really, where could this housing go in the distant future in terms of having The zoning and the flat land? Those are the big issues that Our general plan update will need to delve into. And that's that's really all I want to share with you tonight. I'm just going to flash through some pictures because I love showing pictures of what else is happening. The Grand Oaks Project is Is coming along nicely. That's one of the projects that's going to implement housing units, the Emerald Ridge Project under construction, as I just mentioned. You've seen that on El Camino Real, these are big housing projects, even La Paz, it's a big housing project with forty-two units right in our downtown. So Robles, really nice housing units. Okay, they're not affordable, but they're fantastic. They're up by Pluma Park, a big number of units. So this is just a sample of some of those housing projects. But anyway, that's the snapshot I wanted to share with the council tonight, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Phil. And we do need those higher level homes because the people in the mid-range homes want to move up and then people move into those homes, and so there is that cycle. Wonderful. So really what we're seeing tonight, I'm not noticing anything new. We kind of did a review Of the information we've gone through before. You kind of just went went through that again for all of us, for the public, but there's nothing that's changed, nothing we need to be concerned about right now.
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will ask for council questions. Councilmember Funk.
Yes, thank you for the update. I've noticed in the design review that we've had a couple of projects come now To the Housing Authority of the county is going through and looking at their various properties with affordable housing And looking to where they can Update those and improve, upgrade the projects And add additional units. We've got a couple of those. Do you have any idea how many different deed restricted portable units we'll be adding with those additional projects?
Yes, absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up. There are two projects on the table right now. One is the Macadero Apartments and the other one is the Oh, what's the name of the other one? It's on the right near downtown. Empire Apartments, thank you. I forgot that one. So the Empire, they're essentially going to double the number of units there, they're going to add a second story. And then all of those are going to be affordable deed restricted units. I think they're, I forget the actual number, but About thirty to forty in that one. And then Macadero, they also want to build additional new units and those will become affordable. And then the existing units Will also get renewed in terms of their affordable dedication. So the Housing Authority is doing both of those. I didn't mention those in our numbers, but again, as those move forward through planning and then off to building in the next year or two, Those are big contributions to the affordable housing stock. They'll definitely jump us a big step forward as well in terms of meeting those arena numbers.
Okay, and will that, will the work that we're doing on the traffic improvements On Traffic Way, that's going to create a an ADX, a acceptable sidewalk Moving from the intersection of Traffic Way and El Camino back underneath the freeway. Is that going to get done before the improvements are done in the Has the project that is essentially right above the back lot of St. Williams?
Yes, that'll be done long in advance of that apartment project coming to fruition.
Great.
Actually, Councilmember Funk, it's it's actually going to start tomorrow. Construction will begin tomorrow on that section of sidewalks. So That's a great timing question.
Yeah, thanks, Nick.
Great, that would that would be a valuable thing for that. Okay, thank you.
And for any members of council or members of the public who have a copy of our agenda packet on page one twenty-one, You will see a list of the major residential activity in twenty twenty and includes those two developments and several others. So Wonderful, good, very thorough. Thank you, Phil. Any other questions from council? Councilmember Borbo?
Yeah, Phil, you you mentioned these, I want to make sure I understand correctly. On page one twenty-one, it says housing production in twenty twenty will not count Because it's sandwiched between previous cycle, which ended in nineteen, and the current cycle, which doesn't start till twenty twenty-one. Then on the following page, it says they will count, and I think you said they will count.
They will count. So sorry about the typo, twenty twenty counts and twenty twenty counts towards this cycle.
To this current cycle, okay, good. And then Oh, no, here's a different question for you, not about housing, but it's in your pie chart. Looks like tree removal permits still take, still constitute a You know, a chunk of planning projects. And I'm curious, you don't need to answer right now, but how many that is and how much time that's taking because You know, we tried to streamline the tree ordinance to lessen the amount of time staff had to spend on those actions and lessen the cost and impact on Property owners, especially for those lower impact, smaller, you know, relatively small trees. So I'm curious about how many that constitutes and how much staff time that is taking. And then It wasn't very important, so we'll let it ride. Although the staff report indicates this, there's two reports required to the state that go to two different offices. But are they both just covered by this singular report? Is that what's Happening here? Because the first paragraph says happening here? Because the first paragraph says the state requires, you know, an annual general plan progress report to the Office of Planning and Research and a housing element progress report to page C D.
We, we give them both the same report. So it just goes out there. But anyway, just to answer your question on the tree removal permits, yeah, the numbers are still there, but the workload is down dramatically. Every tree removal permit gets a number, but we don't take these to Planning Commission anymore. They're done at staff level. The amount of time spent is dramatically reduced. We simply require they submit an arbitrage report. We do post the site. We do send them a letter um taking an action on it, but it's simply a quick letter. And so there's a dramatic time savings there, but there's still documentation. There's still a permit that gets issued for that removal. But the amount of time is just not significant.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. Any other council questions before we go to public comment? All right, seeing none, we will open it up to public comment. If you're on the webinar, uh if you would raise your hand using the little raise-hand icon, or if you're on the phone, I believe Luke, it's star nine uh that you can press if you're on the phone. I, I'm not seeing anyone uh raising their hand. I will ask our city clerk if we have anyone who has emailed in public comment for the record.
We do not.
All right, I'll go back one more time to the phone and the webinar. Raising hands, no. All right, seeing none, we will bring it back to uh council for a motion. Or actually, there's no need, notion needed. We're just receiving the report, so we are good to go. All right, thank you, Director Densmore. Uh and now we are on to item C, C three, the City of Atascadero marketing update, and our deputy city manager Terry Banish will be making this presentation.
Yay, there I am. Good evening, council.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you for having me. So without further ado, I want to make sure that you um can see my screen. One second. Okay, let me know if you can see that.
Not yet.
Okay. Okay.
There, now it's coming on.
Okay, how about now?
Almost. It says you've started to share. It's given, take it. There we go. All right.
Very good. Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for working with me on that. This is my first time doing this, so. Anyhow, um what we want to do this evening is give you a quick marketing update. And before we get kind of summarizing here, we'll have our twenty twenty marketing plan year in review, which will include the city's marketing efforts and tourism marketing efforts, and then our performance metrics and what we're doing in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And then we will be going into an overview of the city's marketing campaigns to start this off. So as we kick this off with our ad campaigns, our advertising um in twenty twenty started out strong with focus to our event lineup for the year and advertising focus to shop local. Our first Friday monthly events was the first new event in an effort to promote shopping in the downtown as we worked hand-in-hand with the bid in the chamber, and then COVID hit, so we learned how to pivot really quick. And we did. We use safety messaging to support our community for both small businesses and residents, and social media played a major part in all of our advertising efforts. And we also initiated the hashtag be safe, be calm, be kind. Um and then in the months to follow, we did a little bit more of a support local focus on virtual happy hours and our brews and burgers trail. So we'll share a little bit more about that. This shows you some of our um first Fridays messaging that we did on social media, as well as supporting our downtown with our uh Super Bowl and first Fridays again in March. We also had our marketing campaign uh with our uh Charles Paddock Zoo with digital efforts that we did on Visit Slocow as well as supported with print ads that we did um in the New Times and Atascadero Recreation Guide. As we went to change and pivot, um with the new pandemic, we created and placed information that was easily accessible on the homepage of our city's website, atascadero.org, and launched with the messaging be safe, be calm, be kind. We reached out to our restaurants and businesses to help get the word out on their business hours and takeout schedules, and we embraced everything virtual as a resource on the website for residents to be able to use from community assistance with our virtual rec page to business assistance with grant information. And you can see the different um circles there where you would click on those, and it would take you to those pieces um on our website. This gives you kind of a sample of virtual, our virtual recreation page um that's still in place today, as well as our messaging on social media, uh from hand sanitizers that were made locally to takeout to supporting local as well as um more of our safety messaging, like what the six feet apart really looked like um as we worked through the pandemic. We also worked to engage our community virtually uh through our Recreation's Ten Thousand Step Challenge to the zoo's educational videos where they checked in with the animals and to see what they're up to. Those really took off, um and were really educational as well for folks. We were able to utilize our new full-panel billboard um on Highway one oh one and outdoor messaging uh supported that too, to stay safe and support local along with banners in the downtown, reinforcing that message. And as we continue through twenty twenty, we focused to outdoor messaging with golfing and our zoo and our downtown uh through another billboard that we had in place following that. As we continued in November, we introduced our Brews and Burgers Trail. That's something that we hadn't really highlighted a whole lot, and we did that November through January. Um we actually had our radio partners, K Z O Z, doing a virtual happy hour, and we promoted this the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving and Shop Small Saturday, and we included our merchants in the downtown from Fair and Elizabeth Loaf to La Plaza and really talking about what was to come with that. Um and our breweries and restaurants as well. So it was a really well-received campaign. As part of that, we ran digital, of course. We had our fifteen-second programmatic videos. Um we had three different ones. We had the first one that started in November with fresh air, cold beer, enjoy life here. And then we went to the holidays, and lo and behold, we had to kind of go backwards a little bit and did more of a takeout message on that on that last part of this promotion going into January. I don't know if this will play real well, but that just goes to show you a little bit of what we did with that programmatic video. And even though the total clicks were not as high as what we anticipated with that, um due to the stay-at-home order that was initiated on December third, the engagement with the video was sixty percent, so it was about fifty-five thousand impressions where people watched it all the way to completion, which was really good for us, um out of those ninety-three thousand impressions. And then also, this next slide shows you the print um that was supportive with our Brewers and Burgers Trail, both on the billboard with enjoy life here, and then the enjoy takeout here, and then also our menus uh add in New Times that helped kind of put through that message. So we also did events in twenty twenty. We were able to launch the fifth annual Tamale Festival. Um newly added the Friday, we really pulled that off at the grand opening party. We had a two-day event with fireworks. We had bands, of course, as you all know, we got the Westways Magazine for Southern California and the Top Five Worth the Drive. Our event was picked up there. Um it's promoted across all of the different traditional media that we do, and Tamale sales exceeded forty-five thousand Tamale's over the two days versus twenty-seven thousand in twenty nineteen and twenty-three thousand in twenty eighteen. Um the total of both days cost us thirty-seven thousand out of the marketing budget, which is pretty good considering all of the events and all the different events within that event that we had that made that release super successful. Um in addition, moving on through our summer concert series, we had to do virtual summer concert series. The first concert was performed here uh here at City Hall, um and that was attended with the Martin Paris Band. And then we ended up partnering with ABC Television, really uh worked with them and K P R L to bring the event both to YouTube and to um Saturday evenings on K P R L. And out of all of the different shows, we had nine of them. There were three hundred views per show and forty to fifty active listeners per show, so it was well-received. Moving from there, we went to Movies in the Gardens, becomes Movies in the Park, um drive-in style. We had Saturdays in August. Um we stayed on track with that outside of having to reschedule due to the smoke from all the fires. Um but this event went fairly well. Uh we had our Galaxy Theater popcorn um booth. We had a food vendor booth. We had about twenty-five families attend each one. We were hopeful to have a little bit more, but um at the end of the day, folks really enjoyed being out there in their cars and doing this drive-in style. In addition, with our Brew of the Zoo, we really tried uh to bring that event uh to life, but because of all the different challenges and the safety guidelines, we ended up taking it virtually in September. Um that event uh basically was awesome. It sold three hundred and six tickets and brought in about four thousand dollars in revenue. Um those ticket sales were fifty-three percent local Sloane County, twenty-nine percent Santa Barbara County, fifteen percent Ventura, and three percent LA County. So you have really good following. We had four thousand in that profit, and we added another two thousand a day of with people just donating and being captured in that live audience. And the Santa Barbara Zoo did their Brew at the Zoo because of our success with ours, so um definitely a great event. We also have our holiday event summary. We were able to bring the Holiday Outdoor Boutique uh to fruition, everything being outdoor over at the Atascadero Lake Park. We had our Light Up the Downtown drive-in style, uh that included lighting up a city hall, and after the lighting, checking out the downtown shops and being able to head over um to the drive-through Tascadero um high school, High School Hill, and really go over there and check it out. Um this little video in the upper right-hand corner gives you a little sample of that event, so I'll play it real quickly, and then we'll move on to the next thing. Now you get the idea of that one. Um that probably stopped traffic a little bit, but it was this huge success um over at the high school as well with their glow shine and sparkle event. We also introduced three days of Santa's reindeer. Santa brought his reindeer over and had just a complete day of folks coming in and out and taking pictures with the reindeer. Um we had our new Trail of Lights uh tour map um that really featured decking out the holidays. Um and I know you couldn't hear that video, but it was, the music was the holiday music. Um with our Trail of Lights tour map, we've had some huge success with that. We had a lot of engagement with people decorating their homes. Um it was a fun way for residents to really engage the holidays, um and we'll definitely do this event again in twenty twenty-one. Moving from that, we had city-sponsored events. We were able to have Wine Speak Paso here at City Hall. We even had Pink attend that, which was super fun. Um we had a Tuscan High School drive-through graduation. We had our Lakeside Wine Festival yoga, lineup yoga that we had done in Second Gardens. We had the drive-in movies at Colony Plaza, which was a coordination effort with Wild Fields Brewing, Colony um the, excuse me, the uh Galaxy Theater and the different restaurants over there in Colony Plaza. We had the Colony Days Reverse Parade, and then the Glow Shine and Sparkle Drive-Thru Parade that um just showed you on that video. And one of the highlights, of course, being um our graduation parade uh with our greyhounds, so super fun with that. We also had an unexpected event with our monolith uh show up in the middle of the night um and really put a Tuscan Arrow on the map as the third place to have a monolith arrive. Uh so that too was a great event at our beautiful stadium park and continues to be there today. And as far as our tourism marketing efforts in twenty twenty with so many unknowns, we took a conservative approach and refocused all marketing efforts to our owned Visit Atascadero channels and paused any paid media. This included content development, social media, website enhancements, and new programs uh that would support our local businesses while sharing um our destination and the experience in our destination. This is a list of some of the things that we had to do with the COVID nineteen recovery marketing plan. Um we had social media takeovers highlighting local businesses. We also had um persona-based itineraries that were programmed and developed on VisitAtTascadero.com. We also had um our Tuscan Arrow Backstage Pass, which highlighted and showcased hiking along Los Lomas Trail, Re-Bridges, that's preserved, and biking through the Garden Farms neighborhood. We had more than twenty-five hundred people that were engaged with our Instagram stories for that one. And then we had our local business spotlight, social media campaign um that had a variety of different uh folks in our area from halfway station to Chaparral Gardens, Juice Boss, Colony Mash Brewing, um Country Touch Cafe, Traffic Records, uh Colony Market in Delhi, just to name a few. Um so really successful for us there. And then as far as twenty twenty-one, as vaccines continue to be distributed and travel restrictions are lifted, um burden marketing plans to relaunch all our marketing channels, including paid and earned media. Uh the momentum that we've built up on our own Visit Atascadero space through social media will continue, and we'll look for ways to leverage the content. Uh travel itinerary shown here, just an idea of some of the things that we are working on uh right now with the Visit Atascadero site. We'll also continue to work on website enhancements and then create new photography and video and content out there. So you can expect to see more in that tourism space. We also have our website analytics, and I think the biggest thing as we go into performance and to see how well we're doing and see how our advertising and everything is performing, it's a little tricky when you have a year like we've had with COVID. Um the total page views for twenty twenty were a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Um and unique visitors are only kind of once in a month. That was fifty-nine thousand, but I wanted to keep um two thousand and eighteen up there so you can see the difference in the numbers. We've gone backwards on our website, however, we'll be able to make that up in twenty twenty-one. Some of the other things to note, people are going to our homepage more often, and they were still looking for events um on that website. As well as you can see, the city's marketing efforts on number one and number two at the Tuscan Arrow and Pass Revolves being top markets, followed by Los Angeles and San Francisco, really are a direct reflection of our tourism dollars and um how we've spent um our money in advertising and promoting um the area. We really do split that website. Social media took on a whole different ballgame in twenty twenty um with the Facebook followers and Instagram really increasing. This just shows you the Visit Atascadero social media pages and the following that they have right now. And what you can see with our uh following on City of Atascadero year-to-date, you can see that our Facebook followers were up twelve percent year-over-year. Twitter has gone up sixteen percent and Instagram up forty-three percent. So you can see kind of where people are spending their time as well as with the zoo. The zoo is up eighteen percent in Facebook followers and Instagram up ninety-three percent. So they've really had some real uh strong engagement with the videos and the things that they've been doing on the Charles Paddock Zoo um Facebook and social media, Instagram pages. As far as budget goes, I always provide you all with a kind of snapshot, snapshot of the budget. Uh we had spent um last year, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, a hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. That was our uh revenue, less expenses, basically our net actual, what we spent. So we didn't um spend the entire uh two hundred thousand dollar budget there, and for, you know, good reason, we didn't have a real Brew of the Zoo. We didn't have our concerts to promote. We had three of the first Fridays that were left um as well. So that's just kind of gives you an idea there. And looking ahead to twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, uh we'll continue to work with the COVID nineteen safety guidelines and tiers. Um virtual event, hopefully just Brew at the Zoo for April twenty-fourth, and if you haven't gotten your tickets, you want to do that. Um in-person events, we're hopeful that we could do Ice Cream Safari uh in July and Zoo Boo, also bringing in the Summer Siesta Series at Farmer's Market, where we bring in the bands and we bring in food sampling and really feature really feature some of our restaurants in town. The Summer Concert Series in Atascadero Lake Park, we can really socially distance folks out there. Movies in the Gardens, same thing. For a big signature event, Hot Elk Mino Cruise Night, feels like that is realistic as well as all of our holiday events, including Winter Wonderland. And looking ahead to with the city events, we'll continue to work with the fair, depending on what the fair is going to do sponsorship-wise. Some of the new events that we're working on is a new Haunted Tours of City Hall possibly. And then also a new downtown, new downtown events to Second Gardens and maybe pop-up concerts and things like that at the new Atascadero Mall complex. And also working to add fun events to the Zoo Garden. We'll continue to attract events to our area and bring back signature events in 2022 as well. As far as marketing efforts, marketing plan will continue to include our event promotion and promotion of our city and private assets. We'll continue to focus on supporting local and shopping local and also across our traditional and digital platforms, as well as our continued investment in growing our social media presence. I'm not sure if that was 10 minutes, but do you have any questions at all?
I love the picture. Terry, what a fantastic job during 2020. It was a very, I mean, challenging year that goes without saying. And your creativity and the things that you were able to bring to our city for our residents to to enjoy. And like you did really like pull back and it's not about bringing other people here. It's about how do we, how do we serve our residents in a, in a great time of need? And you did a tremendous job on that. So thank you. As I will look to council if we have any questions. Councilmember Funk.
Question in the comment. The question is, I didn't see Dancing in the Streets on the list. I saw the Hot Community Cruise Night. Just to confirm, that's, we're not going to try to be able to pull that off. I'm sure the lead time is really long for that.
Notice the frowny sad face.
Well, and it's, you know me, I don't like to say no to something typically. What I really feel as we go through the tiers and as we open up a little more, if there's an opportunity to do that event, it's probably going to be more of a smaller scale of Dancing in the Streets. Granted, definitely we could bring in some of the bands, but it's, it's hard because they're all in one, like, location, like they're all like right together. You know, 12,000 people, 7,000 people. It's a little, it's just tough to manage that unfortunately. But you know, it's, I'm not going to say absolutely not. It's just, it has to look a little different. And then how do we have that control, basically?
Yeah, that's, that's a challenge coming out of the pandemic to, to pull that off. And then my, my comment is that I just wanted to reflect back what I was hearing in the D20 study sessions that I participated in and in, in hearing the comment that came back as they, as those comments were compiled. How very much people in this community treasure the experiences that you are organizing and creating and that become part of our memories as family, as friends, as neighbors. That, that all, these are events that you're creating that are part, you know, have a, have a very intentional ability to attract people into our community. They're also ones that people who live here really treasure because they help us feel connected to each other as a community. And in a time when there are so many ways that people get divided, it's really nice to have these ways that connect us together. And so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. See, that's what makes me want to work harder and bring in more. It is, it's experiences and bringing in those wonderful experiences are, are so important to everybody from a wellness perspective, et cetera. So, thank you.
Beautiful. Any other questions? Councilmember Warba.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Terry, for all of these different events, you know, that you've created that have really come to, you know, make it very fun for folks to stay in town on the weekends, do things and attract people from out of town, which of course we're interested in doing. I'm curious about one though, that you didn't create, and that is the monolith. You mentioned it. And, and of course, at the time, you know, it was a novelty and it was, you know, got even worldwide attention. We had a lot of people coming to town and visiting. Do you have any way of even speculating as to how, you know, how popular it remains, especially with, you know, people out of town coming here and want to check out that curiosity? And, and it's not as it worth promoting as, as something there to come and look at?
Yeah, it's, people are definitely continuing to come up there and, and see the monoliths, so it continues to be popular. I think one of the gauges that we have is the posts on social media. There's still quite a bit of posting on social media and that definitely shows us that it's, it continues to have its popularity. People still want to go and check it out and they want to, you know, they're very fascinated with that. And it's just kind of, how do we harness that a little more and, and maybe make it part of promoting our area as well? We haven't really done that. It was kind of been very organic and on its own. But it's definitely something that we can gauge that way for the most part. I know that Alps do a good job of giving us an idea of foot traffic out there. And I know they've had quite a bit more foot traffic, but hard numbers are a little tougher to, you know, without guesstimating too much. But it's popular, definitely. I mean, I've heard little monoliths and sell them. We can say Visit Atascadero on them with their logos and, you know, I mean, there's shirts. I mean, we can just, we can.
Is it on our website? Is it on our website anywhere or anything?
We have not done that. Just because we weren't quite sure if it would stay. It, that's the part, but happy to add it. And definitely, trust me, Verden Marketing wants to add it. They wanted to add it right away. And I'm like, no, don't do that. We don't know how long it's going to stay. All that, so.
Finding signs downtown.
Yeah. I could see that, definitely.
All right, thank you.
Wild Fields has a monolith ale.
They do.
Hookly brewed right at the base of them.
Very nice.
We can have an event, we can have a monolith festival. I mean, there's so many things you could do, but you know, the residents may not appreciate that, so I don't hear them tonight with that, but there's certainly a lot of marketability there.
Wonderful. Well, you're doing a tremendous job, Terry. Let's see if there's any members of the public wishing to speak and ask any questions or comment on the report. I do see a hand raised. Mr. Oslin.
Yes, it's my time to chime in, counsel. Thank you. And Terry, you do a wonderful job providing events for our citizens of Atascadero. But on top of that, and I think in your marketing, you really don't give yourself enough credit for the amount of people that you put heads in beds in the hotels, outside, people coming into our community that spend money in all of our businesses in town and go to our events. And you should be commended for that. And council should be commended for giving you a budget that allows you to help our businesses in our entire city of Atascadero and the downtown. Every time you've had any event, I can tell you from firsthand experience, a Glenn's Repair always benefits. I would never expect that my business would ever benefit from an event in the city of Atascadero. If I'm benefiting, everybody's benefiting because I'm the least person that should benefit. So, thank you very, very much. Going forward, I really hope you will plan for Dancing in the Streets. I think if things are really lifted June 15th, you have two months to plan it. And I think it's, it, it would be a great event to pull off prior to maybe the Mid-State Fair pulling off a downsized event if they do something. Let's, let's be the leader here and take it on. I think it would be fantastic for the city of Atascadero. And lastly, we do a lot of brew events. I would love to see how we can incorporate our wineries in the city of Atascadero and our distilleries moving forward. Because I don't think we're promoting them enough. And if you can find an avenue to help them, that would be great. Again, thank you for all your hard work. I think you do a tremendous job. And I really believe you were one of the best hires ever for the city of Atascadero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oslin. Are there any other members on the webinar or on the phone that would like to speak? If you're on the phone, you can press star nine. If you're in the webinar, you can raise your hand. I'm seeing none. I will ask our city clerk if we have any members of the public that wrote in for public comment.
We do not.
All right. Well, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. And yeah, if we can dance, Terry. I understand the challenge with who knows what things look like, but you know what? We trust you. I think Mr. Oslin said it well, you, one of the, the best hires in, in recent years. And it's not to diminish anyone else. It's the, it's the effort that we made, that we decided as a council to move in this direction and provide, you know, bottom line, things to do. Really, that was a big complaint eight years ago, five years ago, that there's nothing to do. And now there are so many signature events, like things that you've created from the signature events to the smaller, just the things that we do with the farmer's market, bringing the farmer's market back downtown. So what you've done has been tremendous. So thank you for that. And this is a receive and file unless there's any other comments. We'll move on to our next item. All right.
Everybody.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
All right. So we are now on to item number C4. This is Council Norms and Procedures: Consideration of Amendments. And so just to let the public know, this is something that, what we do is we look at this every, we tend to look at every two years during our strategic planning. Or even on the odd years when we do sort of a mid-year or mid-budget cycle update. And there was one point of clarification that one of our council members wanted to make. And just as, as can happen when you change a little bit of wording, you're, you know, it doesn't mean what you thought it was going to mean. And so this is just kind of a small little thing that we're trying to get some clarification around and, and get that set. So our city manager, Rochelle Rickert, is going to make that presentation for us.
Thank you, Mayor. You actually gave most of my presentation, so I will keep it short and sweet. That's wonderful. Just a reminder, the council norms are basically a document that the, that belongs to the council on how we're going to operate, what are expectations of each other, kind of staff? How are we going to do different things? We do look at these every couple of years. At least sometimes every year if something comes up to see, do they need to be changed? Do they really fit this council or, you know, do the norms, have the norms changed because the council has changed and, and some of those types of things? The council did look at them at their February 19th and 20th Strategic Planning meeting, and they did direct staff to come back with a change. Particularly how a council member places an item on the agenda under individual determination. At that meeting, council directed staff to make it clear that under individual determination, any council member may request to place an item on a future agenda. So the norms that you have before you tonight, you can adopt them as is. You can do further amendments, have further discussion. And formally adopt any changes tonight or direct staff to come back with some changes. Again, these is, these are your norms. So how specific or how general or, you know, what you want them to be is really up to the five of you. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I, and I will, I'd like to start with, I know this was a point of clarification that Councilmember Borbo was trying to make. And so if I might ask you to start us off and any questions or maybe points of clarification that you'd like to make here?
Yes, and, and I discussed this with the city manager this morning. I think that the alternative language that she offered, particularly the second one is good. And, and with that, we could, you know, keep the original sentence as it is. Clarification that the city manager suggested under, under, you know, the alternative paragraph, the second alternative that she mentioned.
Okay, so.
That makes sense to you.
Yeah, for the, for the, for the public, anyone that doesn't have that in front of them. It's the one where any, you're recommending alternative to, which is any council member may place an item on the agenda under individual determination. The item will be for discussion only and/or for the council to consider directing the city manager to bring back an action to a future addendum item in order to ensure transparency and inclusion on the agenda under individual determination. The council member should alert the city manager no later than 10 days prior to the council meeting that they wish to add the item under individual determination. Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's one, and I think it just clarifies what we're talking about. Not just for the council, but for members of the public who might expect that council members and, you know, what it is that council members can and can't do regarding putting something on the agenda just for discussion versus on the agenda for action. I think that that language that the city manager provided as an alternative is pretty good language.
Okay, so you would say to not make the, the other change to leave it as is and then just insert that one?
Well, I was, okay, well, leaving it as is and adding that language, but when, I think that the alternative language covers the whole boat, actually.
Okay, so you're thinking even just remove that one and just put, use that alternative to, to make it super clear?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I'm thinking. I, I mean, obviously it's up to my colleagues, you know, how you feel about it. But I think for me, that those, it, it addresses and clarifies what I was trying to clarify when I originally asked the question during strategic planning.
Okay. So there's that. Any other questions? Like what questions do other council members have? Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that this is necessarily a question, but, but I presume comments are also appropriate at this stage.
Sure, that, that's fine. Yeah.
Right.
Unless Brian pops on and tells us no. Because I think. Open this up to the, the public, but, oh.
Oh, there he is.
That would, that would be fine.
But part of what I want to do is make, with this is make sure that we're clear about how we handle, you know, some situations that are sort of likely to come up. You know, at some point during, or might come up at, at some point during a couple of years that we work together. So that, you know, Brian doesn't have to have heartburn right at the end of the meeting about, you know, us getting off track of following things. And more importantly, so that we're able to create consistent expectations. So one of them is, you know, is like how much notice is required and that, and this language is clear for items that would be listed as a specific item under individual determination printed in the agenda, that you need 10 days' notice. And that, that would, would be listed in the agenda so the public would know. The, we also need to know, you know, the options that are available to the council, what limits there are on, that the discussion can have. And specifically whether public comment is allowed. Because that's a point of confusion, whether, when it's in, under individual determination, is public comment always allowed, sometimes allowed, not allowed? And I think it would be helpful for our norm to be specific. And perhaps we could just address that with language that says that if it, if an item under, if an item has been, you know, line item specified under individual determination, that our norm is that public comment will be allowed.
I don't think that's a norm so much as it is a requirement of the Brown Act. If something is listed on the agenda, we, we have to go to public comment. So that doesn't need to be a norm. Is that correct, Laura?
Yes, and anytime you have an item listed on the agenda, you have to allow for a public comment. So that's why you see we allow for public comment during consent and then every other item allows for that. So like Mayor Moreno said, it is built into the Brown Act that if we list an item on the agenda, Brown Act requires public comment.
And so like, for example, what, a month ago, we brought up the three CE and when did we want to, to take a look at, did we want to and when? And that went on individual determination, so therefore public comment was allowed. There was, I remember an instance during COVID and an issue with a gun store and then you, and Councilmember Funk, you brought up something under individual determination at the time, just to say, hey, this is a conversation I'd like to have, but it wasn't agendized, right? It's just something that got. Right? It's just something that got brought up in the moment, so that's not something we would have public comment on.
Right. And I think I'd like to see us be out, in our norms, allow for a process that could handle either things that can be planned 10 days in advance or things that might come up, you know, in, in a shorter timeframe than that, where because not all of our business can comfortably accommodate the, the timeframe of 10 days in advance. We'll say, we're going to have a discussion about whether two weeks further from that, we would be able to have a discussion about taking action on an item. And, and sometimes we just need to be able to discuss things in public a little faster than that. So if we have a sort of a late-breaking item, you know, which will happen occasionally, Mr. Austin might raise something really profound in public comment and in our, you know, community forum, that a member would wish to say, hey, I'd really like us to plan to put this on the agenda for two weeks or four weeks from now, or whatever, so that you could respond to that in the moment. In that case, would those also be in order under individual determination? Although not printed on the agenda, therefore, there are more limits on what we can discuss, and there's more limits on, and there wouldn't be public comment.
Not completely clear on your question. You were saying if somebody brought it during community forum and then wanted it on the agenda in two weeks, I mean, if suddenly, we could then at individual determination at the very meeting say, oh, the five of us think this is a really, or three of the five of us think this is incredibly important, and we've got to get it on agenda in two weeks, we could do it at that time. We couldn't then have public comment on it because you're in the moment. It's not been agendized. But we could say, it's important enough, we're not going to discuss it, but we're going to put it on an agenda. That's how, that's how it works. Is that the question or is there something else?
Right. Yeah, because the language that I'm seeing here suggests that the only way to put something under individual determination is for it to be known 10 days in advance and be placed on the agenda. And what I'm suggesting is that we want to allow for two different kinds of communication under that agenda item. And one is one that's under, if, you know, if it's specified in advance, it's listed on the agenda, there will be public comment at that.
I, I see, I see what you're saying. I see.
But, but as members, because as members of the public, we would have a right to address this body for three minutes on any issue under the jurisdiction of the council without advanced notice.
Right. I got, I got that. So what you're, what you're asking is what we've typically done is, in the moment, we've had council members under individual determination say, hey, I'm interested in, you know, ABC, are the rest of you interested in agendizing this in an upcoming meeting? And we can briefly discuss it. We can't go back and forth about the merits because it wasn't agendized ahead of time and printed on the agenda for the public to know. That's a Brown Act thing. It's not a council norm. But we can say, yeah, hey, ABC, we see that as being important. Hey, staff, let's agendize this in two weeks, in a month, in three months, whatever. We can, we can do that. That is how that works. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that we are, that we are preserving both mechanisms here of, of using individual determination and that the clarity is, is, you know, we have, with, you know, with notice, it gets printed, you have public comment allowed. And without notice.
Got it. Is it, do we need to in our norms? Because again, this is for our internal workings. Do we need to in our norms put something about the, are you understanding what we're saying? Like there's the in advance and there's the in the moment. Do we need to have the in the moment in the norms? Would that be pertinent for us to do?
So I'll kind of ask Rochelle too. I guess it just depends on what level of in the moment you want. So is it in the moment because I feel like it came up today? Or is it in the moment because it's something very critical? Or, I mean, I guess that would be my, my only question, because then otherwise, if it could just be in the moment, if it just springs up in someone's mind, then that would be in the moment. So I suppose that would be a discussion amongst you guys on what you mean by in the moment. If it's something that's critical or time-sensitive, that's come up, that has to be brought up now in order to make it onto the next agenda. Because if it doesn't, or if we can't do it by special, a special meeting or something, then we'd miss the mark. But otherwise, I mean, I think I would just want you guys to, to be more, you know, definitive about what you mean by in the moment.
But I think we've always done that. And so in the moment could be like, hey, something sparks for me five minutes before the mayor says it's time for individual determination. Or it could be like, I think Councilmember Fonzie, you know, back a year or so ago, had, you know, talked with the city manager and then brought up at a meeting under individual determination, hey, I'd like us to look at our policy with regards to drive-throughs. And there's some critical issues, and we all said, okay, yeah, we can see that's important. Rochelle, when can we get that on the agenda? So that was in the moment in that it wasn't agendized, but it was still an in the moment. You could also have something where somebody says something at community forum, and one of us says, hey, this is a really critical issue. Or, hey, it's an item of interest to me. What about the rest of you? I mean, it can be anywhere on that spectrum. So I think that's what we're talking about, what Councilmember Funk is bringing up. We have the 10 days in advance and then everything else that doesn't make that 10 days in advance, and it's not on the agenda, but we want to make sure we can still bring that up. I don't know that that needs to be in a norm. Or does it?
I, I don't know that it needs to be in the norm. It's not a bad thing to put in the norm, common understanding. There's everything in between, right? The more you do in the moment, the less you can talk about it. So that's when Brian jumps in with his little frowny face and says, okay, this is becoming a discussion. You can't do that. If it really is, hey, does anybody else want to do this? And everybody raised their hand. He's going to allow in the moment. If you want to have a discussion, or you feel like, hey, it's going to be hard to get two others to, to say this, and so we need to have a little bit more robust discussion. Certainly being able to get that to us ahead of time so we can get it on the agenda allows that public discussion, allows some discussion of the merits, allows some of that. But it does not preclude or say you can't do in the moment. The 10 days is ideal. We could probably shorten that to eight to get it on the agenda that we'd like to have finalized seven days in advance. There are also some opportunities between seven days and when the council meeting is. There are some things that we have to do for that, that we would have to put out an amended agenda if we can still meet the noticing deadlines. We could call a special meeting. So there are some options within that, that we'll call it seven days, eight day period, to still get it on the agenda if you want to have a more robust discussion. Or you can just do it in the moment, but know that, that Brian's gonna pop up, not with this smiley face, but this frowny face and, and, and cut you off more than you would like.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yeah, I didn't mean to complicate this. I, I appreciate Councilmember Funk's concern because by, you know, clarifying how you get a more robust discussion going under, under individual determination, I could see how she'd be concerned that that kind of might implicitly preclude a more, you know, impromptu discussions that we've typically had under individual determination. So, you know, I hate to add an extra sentence or something, but, I mean, I think we all agree that it's, it's, it's not meant to preclude those, those impromptu, very brief discussions. But if you want to have one, a more formal discussion about, you know, putting something on a future agenda, where you might even want to present information and allow public comment, I think this clarified that. It was certainly, certainly not meant to preclude.
If I could stop you for a moment, Councilmember Borbo, I think what we do is we keep the original sentence in there as is, because that's exactly what that is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, well, that you can put something on the agenda under individual determination. Well, actually, maybe that isn't. Let me, let me, let me backtrack that. Yeah, maybe that's not that.
I mean, you'd have to say you can mention, you can bring up an item during individual determination, but unless it is placed on the agenda, the discussion would be very limited and, and public comment would not be, you know, not be allowed.
Can we come up with, Laura, could you come up with a sentence to throw in there so that we don't need to bring this back another time?
Um, sure. I think, I think it, what it's going to hinge around more, like you have, on that second alternative, you have that any council member may place an item on the agenda under individual determination. And so maybe we can go with the new language. And then I think really what it hinges on is the level of discussion, right? So anything that's kind of on the fly isn't going to, and maybe Mr. Perry can sort of chime in here a little bit on, on what really is considered discussion, because the Brown Act says no discussion. And while he's, you know, allowed a little bit of a, hey, I would, I really think this is important to put on, is everybody else in agreement with that? Great, we've got consensus. But really, any true level of discussion can't happen unless it's been agendized. So maybe we can sort of tweak the language as it goes around discussion, and then that will sort of encompass it, where it still allows for the on the fly, but is very clear that there can only be discussion if it's advanced and if it's on the agenda. Then therefore, it still kind of allows for that on the fly to get put up there, get the consensus, and then go forward.
Mr. Perry, can you give us a nice, super long, long, long legal sentence that confuses the hell out of everyone, but says exactly what we mean to say?
Well, yeah, let me just look here in my briefcase. I'm sure that's something here. Maybe I instead could just refer you to the Brown Act.
Please don't, because that really confuses everyone.
Well, this, this, this part actually isn't too confusing. I will tell you that the section number I'm looking at is, is 54954.2. And in it, it says that, and this is, I think, actually understandable English. A member of the legislative body or the body itself, subject to the rules or procedures of the legislative body, which is what you're talking about now with the norms, may provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information. Request staff to report back to the body at a subsequent meeting concerning any matter that be adding an item to the agenda. Or they are likewise, or take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. So that's what the Brown Act says, in, as I tried to emphasize as I was reading that, it's subject to the rules or procedures of the legislative body. So that's what you're doing now. You are setting the rules as to when an item can be brought back for future discussion. Now, looking at the language that you have, we're looking at bullet two, right, on the alternatives? Is that the one? So, so it does say here that it would only be included if it was brought to the city manager no later than 10 days prior to the council meeting. You could add a sentence to this that would say something like, well, let me ask a question before I start giving you words. Is the desire to, to, to deal with an issue that maybe has come up more recently than the 10 days? Let's say something came up five days before the council meeting. And, and you all think it's a good idea to discuss it as to whether or not you want to add it to a future agenda. We could put some language in that would say, you know, if the matter has, you know, I think, let me say to this, rather than to wordsmith this here, I think, at least I understand, and I'm sure Rochelle and Laura do as well, what your goal is. And, and I would prefer, and I don't know if I'm going to get kicked under the table here, that's one of the advantages of, of remote meetings, actually, is that Rochelle can't kick me under the table. So I would say to you that it's an important issue because it's one that comes up often, as you know. And, and my preference would be, rather than for us to try with this group here, to come up with the words that I understand your direction, which is, we need something, some other time when we can have a conversation about adding a future agenda item. Rather than being limited to those items that we would know about 10 days in advance. And, and I would think that it would be a situation where it has come to your attention within that 10-day period. Because it, otherwise, if it was something you've known about for a month, then you should have taken advantage of the 10-day.
Correct. It could have come to our attention that meeting during community forum that we think, hey, this is really important. So it could be literally 10 minutes or within 10 days for 10 minutes, somewhere in that timeframe.
Right.
That we need to be able to bring something, to get a consensus, to bring it back without it having been placed on the agenda ahead of time.
So I'm, I'm not trying to give the words now, but I think the concept is that if the item is one that has come to the attention of the council within 10 days of the meeting, that the council reserves the right upon majority vote, this sounds pretty good, to add it to a future agenda. What did, what did you think of that?
Well, if I might, within 10 days and the day of the meeting, if that's necessary.
And we're not going to wordsmith right now. I think we get the concept. Unless staff is completely off base and not getting the gist of it, I'd like us to not wordsmith right now. But have we got the idea? And Councilmember Funk, I'll ask you, because I know you, you had brought this up, and I want to make sure that we have your concerns handled.
Sure. I, I think that the language, a looser rather than tighter reading of that language would be helpful. I mean, that I don't want us to get it, get into a, a really tight discussion about, oh, and when did you know about this? And was this 11 days ago, or was this eight days ago, or, you know, to, to get into nitpicking on it. I, what we want to do is, is have a mechanism for sort of late-breaking items, knowing that that's going to be much more limited in what we can do, but it still creates, otherwise, we, if we have no right.
Your point is understood. I think we have it totally.
Right.
Brian, Laura, we've got it.
Yeah, that there's something, something upon which, and the council members can't ask each other whether this is good to put on the agenda without doing so in a public setting, so that we're not, you know, you know, we don't, you don't know until we bring it forward. But, you know, you need to get, sometimes you just need to get the temperature of the room to see if this is something that we can pursue. And the, the item might also be, as you mentioned, an instruction to staff as opposed to necessarily an item, that placing an item on the agenda. Or it might be informational as in, you know, we, it's.
We got it.
Whatever week.
We, we got you covered. All right.
Then I think I'm fine with, with letting you guys go back and wordsmithing a thing with, with one additional item.
Okay, so let's have, let's, if, if we're done on this particular item, let's have Brian say something that sounded like maybe you had a.
Yes, I, I actually was taking notes as, because we were going along with this conversation. And I, I believe this sentence may get you there. If you don't like it, then, you know, I'm not proud. You can tell me that, and we can come back another time. But here's what I wrote. If the item comes to the attention of the council within 10 days of the city council meeting, then the council reserves the right on, upon a majority vote to add the item to a future agenda.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's quite it. And why don't we wait and let's work this out and bring it back. It'll be on consent down the line. Let's not do this tonight. All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Funk, is there more?
Yes, one, one brief item. We had quite a discussion back before about the council norm, that it takes three votes to get something onto a future agenda. I think that actually ought to be in the council norms. It is not listed anywhere in the council norms. And so if that is going to be a council norm, that should be explicit in the language.
I, it is under, in, it, it's not probably as explicit as you want it to be, and I'm open to having that be made so. If you look at the second to the last bullet point under city manager, it does say, avoid giving direction individually to the city manager. The majority of the council should give the city manager direction as a formal body. And so that does state that that's how the city manager gets her direction, which would include putting something on the agenda. But if we want to add more bullets and make people happy, we can add more bullets. I'd. But if we want to add more bullets and make people happy, we can add more bullets. I'd like to keep things simple, but it's I'm open at this point.
Yeah, I think that 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 that's a little bit obtuse for the general public to know how do things get on the agenda? If it's going to be a council norm, let's just, it's.
Okay, so staff, if you guys could put that in there for next time, too, that'd be great. And if that's it, I'm going to open us up to public comment. All right, we'll open up to public comment. If there's anyone on the webinar who would like to raise their hand and speak on this item, or if you're on the phone and want to press star nine, please do so now. And I will ask our city clerk if we have any members of the public who have emailed in public comment on this item.
We do not.
All right. I see no members of the public raising their hand. We will bring it back to council and basically you've got our direction for bringing it back ideally under consent at a future meeting with the two items that we've discussed.
That's correct. Brian, Laura and I will work on it and bring it back to you on consent.
All right. Fabulous. Having cursor issues here. There we go. All right. So now we are on to a discussion item, which is our COVID update. And I will just turn that over to the city manager if there's anything that you have to share with us.
I don't have a lot to share. Obviously, things continue to change. There continues to be a lot of vaccinations available. They are getting through to people. It takes, sometimes it may take a week or two or three, but they are continuing to do that. The good news out of the state was that our adjusted case rate has dropped to 5.4 per 100,000, which is an orange tier criteria. That does not mean we're in the orange tier yet. We need to be in the orange tier for two weeks in a row. Now, our numbers have been going up slightly since the week that they were looking at. They were looking at the week that ended on April 3. But I will tell you that the state, I have no clue how they get their numbers. I've talked to Dr. Borenstein about this several times. The dates that they have them reported as a case versus the dates the county have do not coincide. So hopefully, some of some of our our higher number days are are in different different weeks. So if we can make that second week in orange, we would be able to make it to to the orange tier. Other than that, I don't have anything to report.
Any questions or comments with regards to this item? See, now we will open up to the public. Any members on the webinar or on the phone wishing to speak on this item? I am seeing no hands. If there's any any email comments that we've received, I would ask the city clerk to read those now.
We do not have any.
All right. Thank you. So seeing none, we will just bring that back to council and move on to the next item, which is our council announcements in committee reports. And so I will just go along here on my screen, left to right, and start with Councilmember Porbo.
Okay, I unmuted, but I actually changed my screen view, so I had to.
You're all dark now.
Find my, had to find myself here. Um, yeah, unfortunately, it got dark in this room and the lighting. It's either going to be really bright or really dark. So tomorrow have Integrated Waste Management Authority meeting. And again, we will be discussing the issue of the polystyrene ordinance and there be some procedural issues that will make that a lengthy discussion in addition to substantial public interest. We'll see how that goes. Report back next meeting and how that turned out. And that's all I have. I do have a League of Cities Revenue and Taxation Committee meeting on Friday by Zoom.
Thank you. Councilmember Daris.
I have nothing to report.
Come on, you've been to an APCD meeting now.
That was a couple of months. Actually, there's only one. And I did tune into one of the executive ones and I I couldn't really participate, but I did just listen. But that was that was two, three weeks ago as well. So unfortunately, but I'm sure it'll pick up for me.
No doubt. Mayor Potem Newsom.
A design review committee meeting on Thursday, the 15th at two o'clock. That's a new meeting time on Thursdays. It will be reviewing the Little Wings preschool building on Moro Road. Councilmember Funk will be there as well. That's all I have to report.
And Councilmember Funk.
And I thank Mayor Potem Newsom for having that thing. I was running, looking for my packet, trying to find out the address of the the property that's on our DRC. So thank you for having that handy. In addition to Thursday's DRC, I will be participating next week on Wednesday at a meeting of the Homeless Services Oversight Council, which I chair. And that will be the executive committee of the group. And we continue to be working very actively on plans throughout the county. I met last week with the Tascadero Groundwater Basin Executive Committee and the Groundwater Sustainability Agency Executive Committee. And that that works continues to move along a pace. We're in a different situation past Robles because we're physically separate and therefore less priority, but there there will be some expenses down the line that we're looking to find ways to get supported. And that's it.
Thank you. Let's see, I had a what's used to be EVC meeting, our reach meeting, we did back at the end of March. They were, will be keeping a Slow County Advisory Commission, and this commission will sort of preserve the key elements of the EVC board. And so we will continue to be part of that. We, and really, they say the purpose of that is like, keep the finger on the pulse of the issues and the projects, policies and opportunities here in Slow County, because it reaches an even bigger regional body now. The key things that they're focusing on, of course, are space at at Vandenberg. You've got the decommissioning of Diablo that they're a part of, also working on the commercial offshore wind. So a lot of bigger things that they're looking at. Excuse me, also COVID impact analysis that they are in the initial stages on. Let's see, slow cog. Nothing huge. There is some new programming capacity. And so the board will be looking in in June, deciding whether or not to do a call for more projects. So potentially about 7 million they could carve out for reprogramming. As always, there are many more needs and there are dollars. But we will look and see what's available there. You've continually got some who would rather put dollars to just, you know, like the one or two projects and get those things done and others that might like more projects funded and then go look for other grant funding. So we accomplish more and always a balance. So and with that, we will move on to very popular topic of individual determinations or actions. Do we have any of those this evening? All right. See, nothing but smiles and I don't see staff racing to the camera for individual determination. So with that, we will adjourn our meeting and thank you to the members of the public. Thank you to the council and staff, and we will see you in two weeks. Bye.
Bye, everybody.
Meeting adjourned.
Right.
Good night.